Good morning. We're now called to order for any items from the public.
Well, good morning, sir.
Once again, I just want to thank the county commission on behalf of C cap for your generous gift. And at a time when people right now are suffering, you are showing your love and reaching out to those who are in need. So on behalf of C cap, I thank you very much for that gift.
Thank you, sir. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So approved, so moved?
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As having. Mr. Wong, we do have some internal budget revisions.
Yes, you even do purchase order law first, sir.
Oh, yeah. Purchase law. Anything for Tracy. Looked clean to me when I saw it. So we're good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And now the budget revisions. Yes, sir. You have three. The first one is from Chief Court Marshal Lang from Department four sixteen, seeking your approval to move fifteen hundred dollars from account three forty-five, which is uniforms to two fourteen, which is travel. Sheriff Blair requesting Department seven sixteen, which is animal control, to move five thousand dollars from salaries into line M one oh eight, which is, excuse me, overtime. And then lastly, another one from the sheriff in Department four hundred, which is law enforcement requesting approval to move five thousand dollars from material supplies into professional services.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Change of status. A hiring recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor for Cheryl Shoemaker as a personal property clerk with an annual salary of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. That's effective start date to be determined. Letter of resignation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications, for Jace Ferguson, Telecommunicator one, effective twelve, six, twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Anna Hernandez, Senior Telecommunicator, effective eleven, thirty, twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from the Honorable Anthony Petrucci, County Clerk for Leah Riley, Voter Registration Clerk Office, that's effective eleven, twenty, twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Gene V Moats, DRC Drug Screener, effective eleven, seven, twenty-five. There's requests for a five hundred dollar stipend to be received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Communications for Allison Litten as a result of completing the EMD slash Q course, effective retroactive two, eight, twenty-five. Request of five hundred dollar stipend received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Melissa Hostball as a result of completing the EPD dash Q course, effective retroactive two, eight, twenty-five. All those minutes, everybody was here for the, for the November sixth meeting. So need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Thank you. Need a second. Yep. Can't properly move and second any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As having. Thank you. Boarding meeting reports. Uh, so Hardy.
I had a water board meeting on Monday night. I was not able to attend, but I was able to go through the package and look just a pretty much standard water board meeting, just kind of going through a few of their policies and talking about the updates of the water for CMC and the plants that are coming online and also for the water storage tanks. So a pretty standard water board meeting, and that's the only meeting I had this week.
Very good. Commission, what do you have?
I actually didn't have any meetings, but I was on W R N R yesterday. Mr. Stubblefield, as well as Rob Mario, and we talked a little bit about Project All-Star and its location, as, as well as I mentioned that the donation that we're, we're making actually to C cap at the county store and into the backpack program. I was a little bit off on the amounts. I was, I combined it too, but however, there, it might be a little bit of a surprise when they see what we're gonna do. So I, I kinda quoted a little bit more than what we were given. So I'm sorry about that.
Well, we spoke about that. We just, oh, we, we wait to see what the, what the position of the federal government was gonna be before we move forward. So, yeah, very good. Mr. Catlin.
Yes, sir. If I first want to pass along my sorrow to the Lang family, Scott Pucko Lang passed away. And, yeah, and Jim was digging the ditch to put the water line in for the youth fair. We had to go through Scott's front yard. That's where he hit all the rock, of course. But, yeah, Jack texted me this morning early, and so my condolences and prayers got to the Lang family. Um, Monday, I had a farmland protection meeting. I told you this before, that they had twenty-eight applications this year for people wanting into the program, which is the most ever in one year by far. They've rated it, scored everybody, and they have the top three that they're gonna try to get in the program this year. They budgeted two and a half million dollars, which is about what is collected through the transfer tax for them each year to try to get three of those farms in, which would be probably another four hundred plus acres if they're successful. So, yesterday, on Wednesday, I had a Zoom call meeting with the County Commission Association. We had twenty-some commissioners on, on this call, just doing some prep work prior to the legislative session coming up in January, of course, which will be the next time that the CCA actually meets in person together. I did bring up in that Zoom call yesterday about the nine-one-one fees and things, and maybe as a, a, an association, we can address to the Public Service Commission, try to see if we can get the, the wireless fees raised or, or, you know, the problem is, is that they send a lot of that money, as we talked last week, to other places other than back to the counties for nine-one-one coverage and get a better, bigger share if possible. So, and then later today at Hedgesville High School this evening from four to seven, the Department of Highways, West Virginia Department of Highways is having a workshop there regarding the new roundabout on Ridge Road and Hedgesville High School. There's three different proposals on the roundabout, and they're gonna take public input, and then they have a, I think it's December fifteenth is the deadline for comments that you can send in in writing, and I'll forward your, the, the email that I have with the proposed roundabouts and the form you use for comments, if you, if you'd like to comment on it. So I, I'm sure there's gonna be a big representation from the Hedgesville area there. But in my mind, this roundabout, regardless of which way they go, will be a positive thing in, in an effort to try to move traffic a little faster through the nine west out in that end of the county. So, and other than that, that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, it's, it's encouraging to see some movement, you know, because, you know, we've, we've been complaining about Route nine for quite a while. So whether this fixes the issue or not, we'll see, but it will have to help. I had an LEPC meeting this week, and there wasn't a whole lot going on there because of the federal government shutdown, and this is typically the time that they do some of their training with the EPA, which, which was basically also shut down. So his training opportunities were also closed. But also, the vulnerable population committee is working with the Administrative Association for Cold Weather Shelters this winter, which will be with the various churches that, that can participate. So that's a, an opportunity there to be able to help folks. And I did have a Development Authority meeting this week. You know, there's still, as I mentioned almost every, every other week, that there's, there's still a lot going on. Berkeley County, there's still a lot of industry that are looking for opportunities here, and some of our larger buildings are being looked at, which is, is a good thing. They've been setting for a little while. So hopefully some of those things come through, where they can put some people to work, expand the tax base.
Mr. President, I did fail to mention that on Saturday, we did have a veterans parade in Martinsburg, and it was, it's getting bigger every year. I'd like to publicly thank all of our veterans in Berkeley County who, who served us honorably and helped protect our freedoms.
Absolutely. Thank you. Because I think you were, you drove.
I did. Well, I didn't have a veteran, but I was there with the Hospice of the Panhandle in honoring the veterans that, that they served.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. And absolutely, you know, this, this week, we paid tribute, nationally tribute to our veterans. We have a veteran tomorrow right here. Sir, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, but I can't imagine the place we'd be with, without a military, that's for sure. Okay, so we do have a reappointment for John Bushman for the boarding, board and zoning appeal.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Mr. Bushman to the Board of Zoning and Appeals.
Have a second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As having. And.
Reappointment with Matt?
Yeah.
I'll do that, to reappoint Matt, I'm staying to the Roundhouse Authority.
No, seconded. Very good. It's been motion, properly motion and second to reappoint Matthew Olstead to the Berkeley County Roundhouse Authority. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As having. Thank you. And we do have a letter of resignation received from Mike Height with the Berkeley County Roundhouse Authority. I think that the time restraint just probably got to Mike, but we thank him for his commitment to us. So, thank you, Mike. Honorary Commissioner Audrey Stansel from Faith Christian Academy. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Audrey. Thank you for being here. Get you to hop here and stand in front of the flag. I want to swear you in. Stand right here. Raise your right hand. I, Audrey Stansel.
I, Audrey Stansel.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill my responsibilities. To the honorary council member. And to which I have been appointed. So help me God. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here today. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself, where you go to school, and maybe what you want to do when you grow up, or continuing education, all that good stuff?
I go to Faith Christian Academy, and I'm planning to go to Shepherd University next semester, or next school year. And I'm looking to go into psychology and minor in art. And hopefully in the future, I'd like to be an art therapist and try and work just to help people understand what they need.
That's, that's very interesting work. My niece is a music therapist, and she goes all over and she sings, and she does all types of musical therapy for veterans and for people that are just having struggles, and it's a very unique type of work and very rewarding. So it's good to hear that there's some young people that are looking to continue that. So, do you have any brothers or sisters, or?
I have an older brother and two older sisters.
Do you?
Yeah.
That's cool. So you're the baby?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's good. Anybody have any questions for?
No questions, but if I was to be a singer to help out with therapy, they would need therapy.
Have you ever heard of Johnny Carson? I didn't think so. In my day, he was the top late night show host, you know, that everybody watched, didn't know. But my favorite class in my, in my college was psychology, but I wasn't smart enough to major in it. Okay, so, but my professor, he came out every day and did a monologue, and he imitated Johnny Carson every day in class. That's what it is. So, research that, Google Johnny Carson.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
So when you say art therapy, is that, what, what all, because that entail besides just singing? Is there other, is there other parts of art therapy?
There's more like media art. Like, I like to draw and paint.
Okay.
So I'm not really much of a singer either, but, um, usually you can help people, like if they don't know how to tell you what happened, like you, sometimes it's within like a crime or something, and usually you work with like children in that type of sense.
Helping them express themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just help them realize what actually happened and what they are trying to say.
That's very interesting work.
Mu- music is a universal language.
I, my thing is, you know, I'm sitting like, you, you, if you follow that path that you want to go on, you will be so rewarded throughout your entire life that you are able to sit back and understand and that you've helped so many people. So, good for you.
Yeah. Thank you very much for being with us today. If you have anything you'd like to add to any of our conversations, feel free to jump right in. If you hear Mr. Catlin make a mistake, make sure you correct him. We all like to do that, if you could.
Probably at the end of the day, you'll see that we all need therapy.
Yeah, right. Thank you for being here. Oh, I'm sorry. I've got a little, I've got a certificate here for you, too. We'll get a picture with you for this before you leave today. Okay? Thank you.
Ten o'clock's not here. A ten, ten's not here.
I've got one little item if you want to do my.
Of course.
Talk slow. We won't take ten. Talk slow. So, let me get to the. As you recall, you had a bid opening for mounting equipment in the cruisers to adapt to the new long guns that you most recently approved in prior meetings. The bid opening on the thirtieth, you had two bidders, Botec Inc. at seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and then Hall Public Safety at forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and twenty-three cents. Having reviewed them, the low bidder did meet specifications. The only caveat or change that we're asking the commission to approve is with the addition of the two cops, five grant-funded officers, you've since ordered five additional police cars. So the quantity is increased by five to accommodate those new vehicles. So if the commission so chooses, award to Hall Public Safety in the amount of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and twenty-three cents paid for from the shares.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a, it's been properly moved and seconded that we, we approve the amount of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and twenty-three cents to Hall Public Safety upfitters. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As having. Thank you. Do your picture if you like. You do the picture of the honorary commissioner. Yeah. Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and take a break. All right. Go back in session. And next up, Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management. Update on the emergency operation plan. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. So we are presenting our emergency operations plan. I did not print out the two hundred forty-three page document.
We read it.
Yep, I found two spelling mistakes. One was on page fifty-eight, and one was on page one forty-two. I'm just kidding.
I'm thinking, it's many times that we went through that thing over and over.
I'm just teasing you, Randy. I, I read a headset at Guinness World Book of Records last night, four hundred and fourteen pages.
Wow. But the, the plan was originally done, was completely redone in two thousand and twenty-two, when we took, took, went from a conventional emergency operations plan to a ESF function, which the state went to that and recommended that counties follow suit. And we did that back in two thousand and twenty-two. That was a pretty heavy rewrite and an update, and that was done by, by contractor. So it's recommended that we update this plan every two years. So this year, we went through the plan ourselves. Sean actually reached out to our partners, soliciting any changes from them, our partners being All Emergency Services Partners or Public Works and, and Hospice, the hospital and some other partners. But Sean had reached out with, to them and soliciting anything that they felt needed to be changed or updated within their plans. And the biggest, not a whole lot changed within, over the two years. One of the biggest changes was when we did the plan back in two thousand and twenty-two, this body was referred to as the county council. So now we, it is a county commission. So one of the biggest changes was any reference to this body that was in this plan is, was changed from council to commission, and that was throughout the plan. That was the, the biggest change. The other changes were our population, where we got these numbers from the census, you know, the county population had increased by. That was the, the biggest change. The other changes were, uh, our population, uh, where we got these numbers from the census, you know, the county population had increased by a little, almost twelve thousand, five hundred. Uh, the city increased by two hundred and seven and actually the town of Hedgesville decreased by forty-seven, according to those census numbers. So these tables were updated within the plan and there are several tables, uh, in the plan that references numbers. Another one is agriculture. Uh, we had lost some farms and some farmland acreage, uh, due to, uh, development. Um. There was a reference in the old plan and uh, this must have, this got missed, I believe, last time where it referred as Cape, Cape and State Park in the town of Berkeley Springs. It almost referred to them as being part of Berkeley County. So we removed that out. And it talked about in some of the environmental sensitive areas. So we just took the Cape and State Park and Berkeley Springs out because they're, they're not part of Berkeley County. In the ESF two, in communications, the organizational structure, we, we removed a, um. A part where it talked about some of the threats to the communication structure that we face, such as wind, uh, trees, uh, power lines down. Uh, we didn't feel that those hazards didn't have to specifically be named in the emergency operations plan. So we just removed that out. And that was with the communications direct, one of the communications directors, uh, um, requests. Within the communications plan, also the concept of, of, in the concept of operations, it, it stated that we can send. We can divert nine-one-one calls to Jefferson County in the event that our center went down, but we also have the capability to do that, to send them to Morgan County as well. So we added that into the plan. Uh, one of the things that we took out was, in the communications plan, it talked about, uh, issuing radios to partners, if you will. Uh, in the event of a large event. Now, we don't have a cache of, a large cache of radios, so we removed that. There, with the capabilities of a commu- communication center to be able to patch to other channels within our, our Washington County or Frederick County partners. There may not be a need for a large cache of radios. That's a very large expense and a big undertaking. Now, uh, with the capabilities, the communication center can patch a channel, uh, to our Washington County responders. They have their own radios. So instead of us having to give them radios, they have their own, uh, the communication center does a patch. And we're, we're up and talking to each other pretty quickly. So we removed that statement out there, basically stating that we would, that we have a cache of radios and there was an issuing process. We changed a couple of things in Public Works about water testing. So it did not, we added that the water company is kind of the responsible party for water testing in the event that the water would need to be tested if we thought there was a contamination. They are the water professionals. So they would take care of that. Along with, we added that the health department be partnering with that as well in any type of water testing. Uh, firefighting, there was, um, a statement in there that stated that in the event that we opened the emergency operations center, that the president of the fire association. Was to be the fire representative in the emergency operations center. And we've changed that to the Berkeley County Fire, Berkeley County Fire Department Chief. Or his designated officer be that person to staff the EOC to represent the fire service. Mass care, there was a statement in there and this was an old statement, uh, where it stated something in the effect that. The Office of Emergency Management. Basically had a cache of volunteers that would staff any shelters that we would stand up. Our shelters today are managed by a volunteer organization, the Red Cross. So we changed that statement saying that, because we really don't have a cache of volunteers within the, uh, the emergency management office. So, uh, the Red Cross is our authority that manages our shelters. So we made that statement in there, changing, uh, the volunteers to the Red Cross to manage those shelters. Um, and then there was some changes to another table where it listed some of the agriculture, natural resources assets, such as cattle, sheep, hogs, horses, poultry. There's a table in there that lists those numbers, uh, uh. That come from a, um. Department of Agriculture Resource. I forget which exactly one that was. Uh, but that was basically it, the changes, uh, uh, within the EOP, um. Just to save you a little bit of reading there to, but, um, that, that, that was the changes in a nutshell, uh, that were changed. There was no- nothing major. It wasn't a, a big overhaul. Sean, Sean, uh. Mainly largely took care of this, reached out to our, our constituents and got input from our other people through our LEPC. So, um. We bring this document before you today for adoption. Uh, once, once it's adopted, uh, we'll get with Matt and we'll put that out on our public website for public review.
There, there was one addition that I saw, uh, that was not, uh, previously in there and it's really a good addition, is the mobile command post. Uh, you know, typically your command post where you have it is nine times out of ten going to be just fine. But we've also found that we've been chased out of there. During a major, uh, hazmat event at the Martinsburg Sewer District Plant. So having that mobile unit available to you now at your discretion, uh, to be able to relocate, uh, if need be, is, is a great addition. So.
Yes.
Yeah. Good job there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Randy?
Where do we keep that mobile unit?
It's at the EOC.
Okay.
Yep.
We, we have designated shelters.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-nine.
Station twenty-nine.
We have the truck at the EOC that we go and grab it, but it's, it's at station twenty-nine.
It's in and out of the weather.
It's in and out of the weather, exactly.
You have designated shelter places that you do use that are already designated.
We do have a list of shelters.
Yeah, throughout the county, yeah.
Yes, so we work with the Red Cross on that. So the Red Cross has requirements for shelters, as to speak. So what we do, any additional shelters that we, that we find. Uh, we get the Red Cross representative to come out. We walk through them and he's got a checklist and he checks off his checklist. Yes, this is a shelter and they give it their stamp of approval. And we're continually working on that and adding shelters, uh, recently, uh. Um, the, the Martinsburg Moose Lodge offered their building to. So, you know, in the event that we would, that we would need it, we'd have, you know, that we would have to go that route. Uh, that's available to us. We had a Red Cross representative give it the stamp of approval and, uh. In the event that we needed it, we could, uh, we could use that. But typically we, we use schools. Schools is one of our greatest partners in a lot of things and that's one of them is the shelters.
The Berkeley Two Thousand Rec Center was used at one time. They brought in beds and everything and people stayed there for several days.
Yeah, I think someone wanted to keep permanent residents. You all took good care of them.
That, that was the flooding event, right? Down in the housing community. I remember that now.
Little hard playing basketball games around the beds. So, so, uh, we had to finally get them out, so.
Yeah, Parks and Rec is another great partner of ours.
And you have the Randy Smith Center down at the end.
All right, we got a motion to adopt, uh, the updated emergency operations plan.
I so moved, Mr. President.
I second that.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As have, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That, I know it's a lot of work, so, thanks Sean.
Hey Sean, what's that picture of the stone bridge down there flooded? What, you, you know the date on that one?
Okay.
Just curious. Yeah, just curious, nevermind.
We have to do that every two years? They recommend. Two years?
All right, next up, Jennifer Swisher. I'm sorry, Jennifer Smith, Executive Director of the Development Authority. Uh-oh. Good morning.
Jennifer Swisher will do that for you. Just let her come up.
Good morning. How's everyone?
Good.
Good.
Um, so everyone should have in your packet a, um, a resolution to adopt or approve the, um, TIF amendment, um, for the North TIF. And I am available for questions if you have.
This is just a formality of the process. As you all know, the, the state approved your change. So this is, uh, prepared by Mr. Stump.
Yes, it is.
And.
So what did the state approve? I mean, that exhibit that you have includes some of the TIF parcels in it? And it's not the same as, I mean, the other parcels, other than the CMC and all of that up there are much different than what the commission approved before. So this, it's the idea that this will be the new TIF?
This is just the addition of the CMC parcels into the North TIF.
Yeah, the red and blue.
Cause in it, it says like, that it's a A is what the TIF is in that. And the green part is. Includes the Martinsburg TIF, which has been in existence for quite some time, but it also is what, uh. Parcels that aren't common property, things like that. And if that's what the state approved, then we can do that. But I don't, the state approved something.
So the state approved, there's, uh, the red parcels and the blue. That's what the addition is for. Now, the green, I know that we are adjusting the green according to, I, I think there, originally there was some issues with what Thrasher had sent, um, and we're adjusting that.
So I mean, we just want to clarify that this is a record. So hey, this is the TIF history. The green. There obviously Martinsburg TIF, it's not also.
No, the Martinsburg, the city parcels were never supposed to be included.
Yeah, and they weren't in any of the other area. It has that whole TIF. Yeah, it has those other issues that are going on.
Understood. I'll get with John. John actually sent this, um, Tuesday. So I'll get with John to have him make sure that the green is in accordance with what could be.
Yeah, this intent was only to include the CMC.
So I know the intent.
Yeah.
Getting documents out there saying, well, this is the rest of the world.
Understand. All right. Anything else, Jim? Okay, I need a motion to approve.
The resolu- to approve the resolution.
Motion to adopt the North TIF Resolution Amendment.
So moved.
Give the president to sign.
And give the president the authority to sign the document.
It's been moved.
Second that.
And second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I will get with John to make sure the map is.
Chad, you ready? All right, next up, Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator on the Health Benefits Plan Document.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I've heard Steve make a mention of today's record-setting, read ahead of four hundred and fourteen pages.
You were a big part of that.
Health Benefit Plan is a pretty substantial.
He wore special shoes to stand up there as long as he has to today.
Um. So what's in front of you for the health plan? This is the guiding document for your health benefits. Um, it took some time with us working with Wellness to get this document finalized. Myself, Aleah, Anthony, Jeff, we had multiple meetings with Wellness. We went back and forth, documents suggesting changes. Um, and this final document was delivered to us, finally reviewed by legal, approved and, uh, put forth to you for your consideration and approval. What this document does is it completely outlines your plan structure. It outlines eligibility for the coverage. It outlines coverage options. It goes over your benefits. Shrines all the things we're supposed to have as far as ACA compliance, HIPAA compliance, COBRA compliance. Um, it's, uh. It has your benefits listed, your scheduled benefits for your three different plans to include, uh, your, your payments and, and benefit structures for things like primary care, emergency services, hospitalization, surgery. It, uh, discusses and gives guidance to employees for their rights to escalate if they feel that a benefit has been, um, not paid correctly. Uh, it also talks, which our next topic after this is for our administrative, um, committee. But the plan also seeks to establish that administrative committee to oversee the plan, to make sure that it is running, uh, as it is intended to on a pay-to-pay basis. Um, it is a very long document, um, probably. A hundred pages longer than it needs to be because it has all the definitions and all legalese and huge multiple pages of COBRA compliance, HIPAA compliance. But basically in a nutshell. This plan is exactly what you set out to create. Started ourself on a plan back in July. And this will be the foundation that we move forward with. Any changes that would be made to the plan for coverages or anything like that, this document would change to affect those changes.
Well, I, I did read in there where Commissioner Whitaker is, he was on the committee with you and Jeff.
That's our next topic.
Next. Okay, I'm sorry. That's, okay. Well, then.
I'd, I'd trust our staff that they've got this thing in order and I would make that motion that we approve and give the president the authority to sign, uh, our health plan.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have.
For the next topic, the Health Benefits Plan Administration. As part of the health plan, we need to establish a plan administrator. That can be a person, a committee, or an entity. Um, your legal team is suggesting that we form a, a committee to do that. We said and we, we talked at length. The committee will handle, um, any issues that come up with the plan. Uh, the committee would handle things like escalations, uh, if Wellness cannot resolve, um, escalations with employees, uh, as it goes to their benefits. It would come to the committee. Um, the committee being formed would help pull some of the day-to-day stuff away from the county commission. You all would delegate some of that authoritative purpose to the committee to handle these. Um, the roles and responsibilities, administer a plan in accordance with its terms, uh, determine eligibility questions. Um, decide, uh, disputes, which, and speaking of Wellness, they have a very robust program in which they handle disputes. They said it is extremely unlikely that disputes make it back to us. They're almost always handled. Prior to having to be elevated to the county commission. Um, but should a dispute have to come here, this committee would handle those disputes and decide whether we would need to bring that in front of this body or not to make a final resolution. The proposed committee, uh, would be Commissioner Whitaker, who was also a part of our selection committee, myself and Jeff Moser, your deputy legal director.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve and appoint members of the administrative committee, as Chad just mentioned.
I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Whitaker for volunteering to serve on this committee and I would make that motion that we approve the recommendation to form this committee.
I'll second that.
A motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have, thank you. Mr. President, before you skip on to Chad's next one, if I could offer, I think all of you know and understand the lift that it was to leave the archaic insurance model that you had prior to going to your self-funded model and. You, it was touted, it would be extremely advantageous from a cost perspective. Uh, it, it's a lot more nimble than what you had before. And I, I think that Chad personally and Aleah both deserve an unbelievable amount of applause for what they've done to get here today. This isn't simple. Uh, I believe you are the only county in the state that truly pulled the trigger and done this. There's been some municipalities that have done it, but. And, and Steve's on the calls with the state association, uh, county commission association and you, you practically have fifty-four other counties going, hey, how's that working? How'd you do it? And we're like, well, we don't know if we're still doing it and we're still living it. But Chad Weinbrenner and Aleah Tucker, without them and their dedication, I, I, I go by their offices all the time because I have a small bladder, but when their doors are shut, I always hear words coming out there that are. I, I go by their offices all the time because I have a small bladder, but when their doors are shut, I always hear words coming out there that are huge, right? So they're talking health and all this stuff. So this has been a heavy lift. Missteps along the way, of course, but I can tell you, I, I'm intimate with the claims that are going on and the, and the expenses that you have, and I can tell you that your claims are being handled properly, they're being handled expeditiously. And your, your, your financial commitment to it is, is trending exactly what was to be expected. So you really can't count on, uh, you know, exactly what happens because we never know what's happening medically, but as it trends now, you potentially have initiated a seven-figure savings for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, and it, you know, it's important that our employees have good insurance. I mean, that's, that's really important for our workforce. But also, we found out, found ourselves in a position that with the previous carrier, it was not financially sustainable. We were not going to be able to continue down that same route. So this opens up opportunities for future, uh, for good things in the future. And, uh, and hopefully we'll have great coverage, you know, for the employees. They don't have to worry about it. If they have a sick child, that's the last thing we need for them to worry about is their insurance. So. I, I know, I know the amount of work that's been put into it. Uh, I know that Anthony's been involved in a lot of those conversations and to get us where we need to be, and absolutely thank you to everybody that's had a, a role in it.
We are very excited to get Jim and Jeff involved in all the daily talks.
But, but speaking honestly though, Chad, you would agree, I think after, we're already over four months in, and there's been very few issues, correct?
There, yeah, very few. They've been minor. Um, we will have a, uh, we'll have something for the committee to look over next week. We have a minor issue in front of us. There's some differences between, um, the Cigna Network and the Highmark Network with how they perform and how they reimburse, and the idea is to have our plan reimburse as similar to the Highmark Network as possible. So we need to make some very minor changes to some stuff like that. Those are all things that we anticipated. We just couldn't really fix them until we had claims. So, uh, but other than that, it's, it's been very special.
Sometimes problems don't show until you start to implement. Sometimes you have to have an implementation before things that, uh, you know, maybe you're not working the way you thought they were going to work, start to show themselves.
Going forward, assuming you do this year to year, all these breakups worked out, your insurance contractor plan that you have with the employees updated and it'd be easy to update before the payment starts and all that. And this committee, while yes, you're essentially an insurance company, isn't making day-to-day decisions. You outsource almost everything to third-party administrative, but sometimes things can get escalated to where it's ultimately it'd be very rare. I think, I think it would be a work great.
Thank you. Well, all I heard for years was as if you weren't involved with Highmark in West Virginia, it's the only choice you had was, I was told for years, but Cigna obviously has the same ability to offer as much as they did in my mind.
Yeah, and you know, this has been a, a masterclass in health insurance.
Yeah.
It is an industry that I believe is purpose, purposefully made to be confusing. Um.
Yeah.
And Highmark's contracts with payers in West Virginia are very advantageous to companies to stay with them. Um, they typically reimburse payers more, which means that the physicians and certain specialty groups encourage groups to stay within the Highmark bubble. Um, we stepped out of that bubble and we found we haven't seen much difference. Uh, we identified one difference, one major difference prior to implementation, which was a mental health provider that many of our first responders used. And we got with them even prior to implementation and went under direct contract so that that would not be an issue. People were able to maintain that coverage. Um, other than that, there's some minor billing differences that WBU has from Valley Health, um, that, that Highmark had a different negotiated rate and Cigna does, or I'm sorry, the Blues Network had a different negotiated rate than Cigna does. But those are all details we just have to work out and make the plan, do what we need to do. And as Anthony said, now that we have this set is sort of, uh, you know, our, our guiding light, it becomes a lot easier to.
We appreciate all the work you did. Our whole staff, we appreciate you.
All right. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded.
That was already done.
Okay.
Double check it.
Thanks again. Now you're on the committee.
Yeah.
Uh, so we ready for the next?
No, we need to vote. Do we vote?
You did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I messed it up by injecting. I'm sorry, Mr. President. PEIA.
PEIA. So back in January, the county commission adopted a policy that, um, outlined the eligibility for employees who are eligible for PEIA coverage at the time of retirement. The idea of the time behind that policy was to get the employee to enroll in PEIA at the time that they retired. So we use language that said immediately upon retirement. Well, in the state of West Virginia, with the Consolidated Public Retirement Board, immediately has apparently become a very loose word. Um, because it can take people sometimes up to sixty days to get their consolidated public retirement benefits moving. Um, that could also potentially affect their PEIA. So it is not our intent, nor was it ever the intent, to keep people having PEIA eligibility. We just wanted them to enroll at the time they retired. So the request is, is to change the language from to within ninety days of retirement to allow folks to move through the process and not lose out. Which is only a benefit that a very small.
Just the tier one, the tier one people left, not tier two.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yes.
It's reasonable. Anybody who's out, you know, either shopping for insurance or make, trying to make those decisions, you should be able to make that within ninety days.
It's a huge change of lives.
Okay.
That number's dwindled down now to what?
Oh, there's less than a ten left in here.
Yeah. Totally, and at some point, it's over, it'll be over, and then obviously somebody new came in and BA is long gone. Yeah, but we're, we're under ten or less.
All right, need a motion to, to approve the PEIA insurance for retirees policy. So moved. Second. Moving second. Any further discussion? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'll have it. Next up, the Drug Free Workplace.
Yes, sir. So I worked closely with Anthony and Jeff on this policy. Um, Tim Sy had reached out to me with a desire to get the employees at the Day Report Center enrolled in, in your random testing. Um, the idea was is that based on what that center deals with, he wanted to maintain the integrity of those programs and thought it was only right that his employees be subject to that testing. Um, I spoke with Anthony and Jeff. Um, they came back with language to add to the policy to cover the Day Report Center. That's the highly, two highlighted paragraphs of your policy. Um, there's nothing being taken away from it, only added to it. And both those, um, paragraphs are to include the Day Report Center and Recovery Resource Center into your monthly.
I'm surprised that they wouldn't have already been included.
Um, yeah, I think, so I was, when this policy was originally done, it was really aimed at public safety, um, and the court marshals. Uh, I don't know that, that there was an idea to include them at that time. Tim has talked about it off and on, um, throughout the years, uh, since I've been here and just finally got very serious about doing it.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the Drug Free Workplace Testing Policy.
Uh, so moved, Mr. President. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion for Chad? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'll have it. Thank you.
Fifth and final, uh, our part-time employee classification and compensation scale. So to start off right now, uh, within Berkeley County, there are only twenty-eight approved part-time positions across all elected offices, so this does not affect a tremendous amount of people. However, there are some changes coming up, um, that will add to that count a little bit. Even amongst those twenty-eight positions, you have a tremendous difference in sets and requirements. Um, you have anything from, uh, entry-level clerical work to functional firefighting, to, uh, financial professionals and sort of public accountants. Uh, currently, you know, are on your part-time pay. We've never had a formal part-time pay. We have, for the most part, always taken our standard part-time hourly rate of seventeen eighty-three an hour and five across the board. There's been some variation from place to place amongst certain professions, but for the most part, it's been the seventeen eighty-three. Um, we need to be more nimble. We need to have more flexibility in how we place our part-time workforce. Although they are small, they are very integral to the day-to-day operations. Um, and the scale in front of you establishes seven different levels of, um, or seven different grades, I'm sorry, for a part-time workforce. Um, they go from anywhere to entry to clerical, up to a professional license, which would include things like attorneys, engineers, sort of public accounts. Um, we do not have current employees in all of these grades, and some of the grades we have no employees, but it does leave us an opportunity in the future if we ever need to hire part-time or temporary work, we'll have those grades and that structure placed to be able to bring folks in. Any question on that? Barely straightforward. We build it to have each grade has a, a bit of an explanation process, so hopefully as department heads and elected officials are evaluating the need for part-time workforce, they can start to see where their workforce would fit into these grades.
And they are limited to less than twenty hours a week. Yeah. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's needed, been done for quite a while, quite honestly. Established it.
Includes like Marty, Marty Dunn and Peticiai and all those positions, correct?
Yeah, the positions.
Yeah. Hmm.
Yeah.
And the job, the job type and the typical roles, those are, those meet kind of the standards of, of the general standards of how other organizations have set up their.
Yes, that job type and typical role really mirrors your full-time compensation compensation schedule. It's close, it's possible, could, without getting the full-time schedule's very granular. It's got every single job type on there. Um, I just kind of compacted a little bit and.
Right. Yeah, this has to have a little bit more flexibility in it.
Okay, need a motion to approve the part-time, uh, employee pay scale.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What else you have for us, Chad?
Yeah, Chad.
Well.
You're on a roll, brother. You're on a roll.
We'll have some part-time reclassifications coming.
Very good.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
We appreciate you providing lunch today.
Okay, that's going to conclude our business for the day. Any items from the public? Very none. We do have a need for executive session, so I need a motion for executive session for real estate, for real estate.
Mr. President, I move that we go into executive session for discussion of real estate matters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.